If I could have everyone's attention, please. Good evening. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been due to post an order, and call upon Mayor Pro temp Herkshaw to invite a guest minister to begin the meeting.
Actually, Commissioner Castillo has a guest pastor, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
We're going to ask Pastor Aaron Sines to give us the application today.
Join with me in prayer. Father God, we come before you today as servants of not only our community, but as servants of your mission to this world. We ask your blessing upon our work in the places you have called us to. Let us recognize that every opportunity to serve our brothers and sisters is an opportunity to serve you. Pour out your blessings upon the servants of this city, that they would operate in your grace and love. We ask for peace and unity across this land, that any spirit that seeks to divide us will be removed in your name. As we learn to be in a community with each other, help us to see the good that comes from humanity amidst the chaos and the turmoil of this world. As we learn to live side by side with each other in this community, give us a spirit of togetherness, encouragement, and compassion, so that we may make a difference in the lives of many. We lift up today those who are without hope, that we who have been called to positions of leadership may inspire hope again. Open our eyes to see, our ears to hear, and our hearts to love our neighbor as you have loved us. Bless now the gathering of these leaders, citizens, and friends, as we seek to make our city a community of people who are interested in the building up of your people and your creation. Guide the meditations of our hearts, that our words will be honoring to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. I think we have some TSTC students in the audience. I think. Are you all from TSTC? Great, glad to have you here. And welcome, along with all of our other visitors. I'm going to try to go through the first three items fairly quickly, and then we have our consultant Ann Berger, who's with us. I'm going to take, we're going to go into an executive session. Item out of order, take Project Uncle up. We'll go back, but we'll take the first three presentations out. Item one is a presentation by Valley Praise in regards to their annual Easter egg drop that will be on Saturday, March 31st, 2012, City Sports Complex in Wilson Road. Happy birthday to Valley Praise.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Janine Campbell. I'm the event coordinator for the VP Egg Drop. And as Mayor mentioned, it is March 31st. We always have this the Saturday prior to Easter to allow for more participation from families as well as corporate sponsors. It is from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. We are absolutely delighted that the city is cosponsoring, along with a variety of other corporate venues such as HEB Chick-fil-A, TSTC, as well as HCISD. Our school district is cosponsoring in the respect of allowing each child kindergarten through fifth grade to go home with their personal invitation to this event. So we are expecting anywhere from 4,000 to 6,000 kids at this event. We have ordered already, and it is taking up quite a bit of space at our ministry center, 40,000 eggs. And it is coming along quite nicely. Today, we would like to formally invite Mayor and Commissioners to attend our ribbon cutting ceremony with the Chamber of Commerce at 1:30 on March 31st. It is to signify and officially kick off what we plan to be a great event for many, many years to come in cosponsoring with the City of Harlingen, so that it becomes a staple in the city event lineup. Would you have any questions for me at this time?
Sounds like a great event. We look forward to it. I'm sure we'll all, we'll all be out there by the rest of it.
Awesome. Thank you. Don't forget your bunny ears.
Commissioner Herkshaw can help delay the rest of the day. That's good.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Item two is a presentation by Maria Benedict, ESPH Program Specialist from Texas Department of State Health Services, Heart and Vascular Disease and Stroke Health Services, the Bronze Board to the Harlingen City Commissioner.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, I'd like to introduce Maria Benedict with the Texas Department of State Health Services. She's a program specialist with a cardiovascular disease and stroke program, and one of the programs that also helped is birthed from the State Health Department with the Tobacco Association Program.
Greetings, Mayor, Commissioner, members of the public. The City of Harlingen is being recognized by the Texas Council of Cardiovascular Disease and Stroke in the Bronze Category in the Prevention and Control of Heart Disease and Stroke. The Texas Department of Health and Human Services implements criteria established by the Texas Council of Cardiovascular Disease and Stroke in Prevention and Control of Heart Disease and Stroke in cities across Texas. City of Harlingen has been recognized in the Small City Category using 10 CBD and Stroke indicators. One, cardiovascular disease and stroke media campaigns are provided to the public. Two, physical activity areas are designed, accessible, and promoted. Three, healthy food options are accessible and promoted. Four, public schools comply with all legislative components of a coordinated school health program and daily physical activity. There's moderate to strong city smoking ordinances, smoke-free ordinances in place. CPR classes are in place. There's a plan to reduce disparities in CBD and stroke. Divulators are available. Stroke is treated as a medical emergency, and healthcare sites in the community promote primary and secondary prevention of cardiovascular disease and stroke. Participating stakeholders are Harlingen CISD, Valley Baptist Medical Center, American Red Cross, the city's Parks and Recreation Department, and Texas Department of State Health Services and the Food Bank. And I would like to present this award, and it says, "The Texas Heart and Stroke Health City Recognition Program, the Texas Council of Cardiovascular Disease and Stroke, and the Texas Department of State Health Services, please to present the designation of Bronze Status to the City of Harlingen for any valuable citywide efforts to reduce the burden of cardiovascular disease and stroke." Mrs. President.
All right. Great. We're delighted to hear that the city as a whole is healthy in terms of its Parkinson disease and cardiovascular efforts. And so thank you very much for recognizing our city and bringing attention to this important topic. So thanks for being here.
Two people I also want to recognize very, very quickly, and they have been instrumental with seven other stakeholders, and I'd like to present Bert Duckert Bossoz with the Texas Department of State Health Services, and Ramiro Gonzalez with the City of Harlingen. There.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to our staff for the support that they provided for this. Item three is a presentation by Wilson Bruce Choua, Chairman of the Civil War Cesquentinial Committee and a member of Cameron County Historical Commission on how they consist in city problems and economic planning, preservation, education on the Civil War Cesquentinial Committee and their efforts in the commemoration of the American Civil War.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. What I basically want to do is to bring you to your awareness and also the citizens of Harlingen about Cameron County Historical Commission, what we do, as well as the current committee that I chair for the American Civil War Cesquentinial. Going on to what the CCH does or Cameron County Historical Commission does, so we help provide and assist on preservation, education, as well as any other programs that anybody, any citizen and/or agency or entity within the county's reign brings up to our attention. We are mandated by, of course, Commissioners' court for the Cameron County, as well as Austin's Texas Historical Commission. And the great thing about us is that we can do so much and assist so much in our endeavors. Who is the Cameron County Historical Commission? As you can see, we have our four officers, Mary Torres here from Harlingen, Mr. Steve Hathcock from Port Isabel, Mr. Norman Rosev from Harlingen, and Mr. Jose Gavito from Brownsville, and 13 other members throughout Cameron County. What are the committees in which we handle, of course, are some of them are Publicity, Marker Committee, Endangered Properties Committee, Oral History Committee, Archives Cemetery, and, of course, our newest one, the Civil War Cesquentinial. So what exactly does the CCH do so I can help or enjoy history? The biggest one that we're all familiar with is the Marker Committee. Anybody who goes downtown Harlingen can actually see some of the markers that the THC has put up. We assist in that, as well as assisting with the private historical societies and getting that done. Endangered properties, if there's an old building that somebody wants to bring to our attention, we could assist in getting that renovated, if it's old enough, and of course, just making it a historical landmark. Of course, the Civil War Cesquentinial Committee, that one is a big committee going on right now. Our Publicity Committee and our Cemetery Committees, all very important within the aspect of tourism, as well as education and preservation. Here's some of our committees that we currently have in action, our Marker Committee. This was the newest marker that we had placed in front of J.T. Canales's house in Brownsville. This was dedicated last year. Of course, other markers that we're trying to renovate and get a little bit more attention is that of Los Rosias over in Los Indios. Here we have the Civil War Cesquentinial Committee. We recently had our commencement event last year where a local patron and citizen from San Benito, Mr. Jaime Vega, came up with our logo. And of course, the county judge, as he's greeting some of our members of the commission and attendees of the event. What big thing have we done lately for Cameron County? Well, the biggest that we've, the biggest project that we've concluded on was the renovation of the old Dancy Building. Some of you may remember, the building was actually pretty much condemned, and we were able to secure funds from the state to renovate that and to bring it back to the glory in which it deserves. Moving on, so is there anything that the general population of Cameron County can do, especially here in Harlingen? Of course, there's always the biggest thing, volunteering time and/or skills. I believe as an historian that there's nobody who cannot assist in anything. The other big thing is that they donate, whether it be artifacts that they may have or financial gift, which is tax deductible. Of course, but what we're looking at also tonight is looking at the Cesquentinial Committee. I believe this one statement is probably the biggest statement that any politician, former or dead or alive, actually has to do with America. And if I may read, understanding the history of the Civil War is something that every American and every young American should be a part of, and that's what President Barack Obama stated on an interview with Mr. George Stephanopoulos. I believe that statement's very, very important, not because I lead the committee for this, but because truly this is the war that touched everybody's lives, and more importantly, it's a war that we here in Cameron County all, and even the descendants of some of the founding fathers here in Harlingen, directly had effect on. Moving on, with that being said, in January of last year, the Cameron County Historical Commission introduced this new committee, and the committee was named Cesquentinial Committee. Our responsibility is from literally 2011 to 2015, and that will be the end of the Cesquentinial events throughout the state, as well as the nation. It also brings me great pride to announce that Cameron County is the only officially sanctioned Civil War Cesquentinial Committee throughout the entire state. We now have competition. Jefferson County is now having their own Cesquentinial Committee coming about, but again, they are a day late and a dollar short. This is a logo that Mr. Vega created for us. It is a very unique and an original one, and it truly shows the aspect of what we're about. Cameron County was very lucky to have, to be, if you will, if it was lucky, to be under rule under both the Confederacy and the Union. So that makes us a very unique landmark in itself. The mission of the committee is very simple, is just to remember the participants of the Civil War in every walk of life, and to assist in education of the students in all aspects on both sides, Union Confederate, and to remember the races that took place of it, the Hano, Anglo, and African American. Moving on, what we do is hold symposiums, both history and research. We are conducting a book fair this year, as well as recording more lectures within local ISDs within the county, and having a movie night, if you will, where we show periodic, or excuse me, movies about or of the Civil War. How can most people find us? Is through the mass media. We've revamped that to hit Facebook, YouTube, as well as a redesigning of our website. And as you can see, as displayed, those are the addresses thereof. And that would conclude my presentation. And I shall, if I'm open for questions?
Just out of curiosity, is there any monuments in the Harlingen area?
No, sir. Unfortunately, there is not. However, some of our founding fathers, two in particular, were direct descendants of Confederate soldiers, and one, I believe, was actually a Confederate soldier. So that being said, we could start investigating further on doing that. What we are, excuse me, what the committee is planning to do is to have a monument placed within Cameron County for all South Texans. We are very unique to have that glorified, if you will, acknowledgement that our boys fought on both sides, whether it be Confederate and/or Union. So because of that, we're the only county within the entire state that actually raised a Union regiment, and therefore, those boys should be remembered as well.
Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to seeing more of this, more activities of First North Norm. And Rosev and Mary Torres are outstanding contributors to all of our local history, and I know that they make five officers and a lot of contributions to what historical societies do, and so we're proud of them, and proud of their part of your organization as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I'd like to skip down to item, well, item one. The closing executive session to discuss, pursuant to Chapter 517, the PTCA, everco section 1.087, item 1.071, for the version of financial information for a business prospect with which the city commission is conducting economic settlement negotiations to discuss and deliberate financial or other incentives and business prospect known as Project Uncle and sign legal advice to the city attorney regarding the subject. Is there motion to go into the second section?
I'll say aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the commission is going to retire back to this group in the back, and we'll probably be in there, I guess, in 20 or 30 minutes, maybe less. We'll try to get out here, back to the regular being as soon as we can. You can just sort of keep it to, you know, low roar out here. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Last time we flagged, Mr. Trevino will be attending this executive session.
How are you? All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next item will be item 11, Harlingen Neighborhood Clean Week, which was done on March 30, 2012, in the area of Little Creek and North Commerce, 2077 Sunshine. This is actually District Number 3. We picked up 3.7 tons of debris and 36 tires, and just wanted to show you some of the volunteers and the pictures of what they were actually conducting out there, some of the stuff that they were able to carry out, and before and after picture. And none of this could happen without the participation of the many volunteers that participate that every month that we have this cleanup fair. All right. That's great. That's a lot of great, and I appreciate the volunteers' efforts and the staff's efforts, too. It's important. All right. Go to item 5, Citizen Communication.
One person there. That is Eduardo Sines with just off.
Yes, my name is Eduardo Sines, and I work with the Texas Department of Transportation out of the San Benito Area Office. I was assigned to attend the meetings at, from Harlingen, once a month, to discuss any transportation issues, any concerns that you may have or the public may have. I'll be available before the meeting and after to discuss any issues.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for agreeing to do that. I'm trying not to keep you here too long.
Before you run off, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Although, yeah, we don't have two weeks, Val, since the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we can get with public... Can we make sure he's on the agenda next time?
Get with public works and make reports.
Is that what we can?
Yeah, we'll put you on the, we'll put you on the agenda next time, but we just have a general discussion of something, we'll figure out what to put on the agenda. But, yeah, if you want to, and then the other meetings come early, and we've got questions, and then you decide whether you need to stay or not. But we can't interrupt a meeting if we don't have you on the agenda to just talk about something that comes in our mind, but we'll put you on the agenda next week. Thank you. All right. Item 6, approved meeting, regular meeting, that's February 15th, 2012. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If there aren't any other motions approved, then...
Someone?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is this approved? Consider agenda, item 7, A and B. Is there a motion approved on final reading?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item A, consider take action, approve purchase of Freedom Hardware and Software, motion by the Tyco Goff Board, amount of $9,336 out of the reserve balance.
Mayor, Mayor of the City, Commissioner, the Goff Board, the Advisory Board has approved the purchase. This basically is a piece of equipment that will allow for better control of the irrigation system remotely, and allow for us to expand the irrigation system itself. The board recommended approval, and the staff is recommending approval. The fund balance approximately has $630,000 of reserve. So there's plenty of capacity.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
We have motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 9, consider ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential multifamily into District 2 General Retail District, District 4 lots 3 and 4 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision, and rezonate from office O District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 9, consider ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential multifamily into District 2 General Retail District, District 4 lots 3 and 4 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision, and rezonate from office O District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item 10, consider ordinance on first reading, amendment to the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Long Range thoroughfare plan. I'm downgrading the designation of proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur 54 from a major collector street to a local street, amending alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road, and to the west where it intersects with Spur 54. Providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Let's break a flag that Commissioner Trevino has found conflict of interest form is not his agenda item.
Mayor, Mayor of the City, this is a request to amend the alignment of the subject road, which is this road here, which would be Brazil Road, the thoroughfare plan, from a local, from a collector street to a local street, to shift the alignment towards the west to a more vertical direction, which would be more like this proposed alignment for a proposed six-lot subdivision. Five of the lots would be for commercial, the west corner lot would be for multifamily development. This is a proposed local street, which requires 60 feet of right-of-way, would allow for local street or possible minor collector street if needed for the 60 feet of right-of-way. Request was reviewed by the Engineering Department. Engineering has approved the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission. Staff is recommending approval, and the P and Z Commission also recommends approval. I'll take any questions, and the town president is also present for questions.
Okay. Item A is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now want to oppose the public hearing, go to item V, consider take action, adopt, and approve an ordinance on first reading, amendment of the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Long Range thoroughfare plan. I'd like the city attorney to read the caption.
No ordinance meting the City of Harlingen Comprehensive Plan Vision 2020, Chapter 4, Figure 4.3, Major Thoroughfare Plan by downgrading the designation of the proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur 54 to a major collector street to a local street, and amending the alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road, and to the west where it intersects with Spur 54, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Someone? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item 10, consider an ordinance on first reading, amendment to the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Long Range thoroughfare plan. I'm downgrading the designation of proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur 54 to a major collector street to a local street, and amending the alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road, and to the west where it intersects with Spur 54, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item 10, consider an ordinance on first reading, amendment to the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Long Range thoroughfare plan. I'm downgrading the designation of proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur 54 to a major collector street to a local street, and amending the alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road, and to the west where it intersects with Spur 54, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Let's break a flag that Commissioner Trevino has found conflict of interest form is not his agenda item.
Mayor, Mayor of the City, this is a request to amend the alignment of the subject road, which is this road here, which would be Brazil Road, the thoroughfare plan, from a local, from a collector street to a local street, to shift the alignment towards the west to a more vertical direction, which would be more like this proposed alignment for a proposed six-lot subdivision. Five of the lots would be for commercial, the west corner lot would be for multifamily development. This is a proposed local street, which requires 60 feet of right-of-way, would allow for local street or possible minor collector street if needed for the 60 feet of right-of-way. Request was reviewed by the Engineering Department. Engineering has approved the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission. Staff is recommending approval, and the P and Z Commission also recommends approval. I'll take any questions, and the town president is also present for questions.
Okay. Item A is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now want to oppose the public hearing, go to item V, consider take action, adopt, and approve an ordinance on first reading, amendment of the City of Harlingen Vision 2020 Long Range thoroughfare plan. I'd like the city attorney to read the caption.
No ordinance meting the City of Harlingen Comprehensive Plan Vision 2020, Chapter 4, Figure 4.3, Major Thoroughfare Plan by downgrading the designation of the proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur 54 to a major collector street to a local street, and amending the alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road, and to the west where it intersects with Spur 54, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single family GR 1 District to General Retail GR District for lots 1 and 2 Block 1, Oyo State subdivision located at 1725 Ed. Carey Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion?
the west to a more vertical direction, which would be more like this proposed alignment for a proposed six-lot subdivision. Five of the lots would be for commercial, the mortgage, west corner lot would be for multifamily development. This is a proposed local street which requires sixty feet of right-of-way and would allow for local street or possible minor collector street if needed for the sixty feet of right-of-way. Request was reviewed by the Engineering Department. The Engineering has approved the request. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission. Staff is recommending approval and the P and Z Commission also recommends approval. Take any questions and the applicant is also present for questions.
Okay. Item A is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now one. I'll close the public hearing. Go to item V, consider take action to adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading and amend the City of Harlingen Vision twenty twenty long range thoroughfare plan. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding the City of Harlingen Comprehensive Plan Vision twenty twenty, Chapter Four, Figure Four, Three, Major Terrifico Plan by downgrading the designation of the proposed extension of Brazil Road north of Spur Fifty-four to a major collector street to a local street, and amending the alignment of the subject road to the east where it intersects with Teague Road and to the west where it intersects with Spur Fifty-four, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Someone move? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eleven, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single family R one District to general retail District, blocks seven through twelve, Howard Dixon and Heights, Edition Number Two, located on the west side of Dixon Land Road, south of Garrett Road.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Trevino has returned to the City Commission room.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting rezones of the subject lots, which are these lots here, from residential single family to general retail development. This property is located on Dixie Land Road, the extension which is recently completed. Dixon Land is a major arterial street which is currently paved, fifty-one feet wide, it's a four-lane street. Most of the subject property is currently vacant. The request is not generally consistent with the future land use plan. It does fund a major arterial street and previous amendment to the future land use map, public hearing were conducted and a citizen input meeting was conducted, generated comments for a mixed use in the area, which did request for future commercial use in the area. A public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission and the affected property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius were notified, which is about twelve property owners. Staff didn't receive any objections to the request. Staff is recommending approval and the P and Z Commission also recommends approval. Take any questions and the applicant is present for questions.
All right, item A is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearings. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now one. I'll close the public hearing. Go to item D, consider take action to adopt and approve an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding the zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero seven dash two seven of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single family R one District to general retail GR District for blocks seven through twelve, Howard Dixon Land Heights, Edition Number Two, located on the west side of Dixon Land Road, south of Garrett Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Someone move?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, there was a name? All right, motion carries. Item twelve, consider an ordinance on first reading, amend to the City of Harlingen Vision twenty twenty long range thoroughfare plan by amending the alignment of the proposed extension of Stewart Place Road to the west where it intersects with Dilworth Road, south of Mayfield Road, African, City of Harlingen.
Mayor, the applicant is requesting to amend the proposed alignment for the thoroughfare plan for the extension of Stewart Place Road, south of Garrett Road, from the existing alignment, which is this alignment which extends south of Garrett and connects to Dilworth Road, north of Mayfield Road, to, which is this alignment here, to extends south of Garrett Road and extend past Mayfield Road and connect to Dilworth Road. The existing alignment you see crosses through existing subdivisions which were developed back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, so it would be feasible to consider to continue that alignment if it were cut into properties. The proposed alignment would come off Garrett, where right-of-way has been dedicated on the, the Royal Villa State was dedicated sixty feet and on the opposite side for, for part of Remington is dedicated sixty, with exception of this corner property as being dedicated right-of-way. It would come down through vacant property and connect through Dilworth Road. Public hearing was conducted by the P and Z Commission. The P and Z Commission recommended to continue the extension but to end here at Mayfield Road. And your attached ordinance reflects where the end at Mayfield Road and not continues all the way to Dilworth Road, which this would be the proposed alignment, which is dotted line on the left side. This is the current alignment at this point. The proposed with P and Z recommended was to continue the south of Garrett, which is ended at Mayfield Road. So, the public hearing was conducted and as the P and Z Commission recommends to continue the line of the end at Mayfield Road. Take any questions on the item.
Phil, you already have existing right-of-way just south to Garrett from the left to the right?
There is. There's a Royal Villa State, they dedicated sixty feet of right-of-way back in, I think it was old, two thousand and six.
You didn't get it on the other side?
We didn't get it through this subdivision here, which is Remington subdivision. The only property that was acquired is this corner property, but there's sixty feet on both sides of this property.
So, would that make it a job there, the intersection?
Possibly would make it a job because it's developed on the...
What's on, what's on the, on the north side of here?
North side, there's, well, it doesn't show on this map, but there's existing houses on the north side. The city has acquired some right-of-way from, excuse me, from Garrett to Business Eighty-three, varies from seventy to ninety feet of right-of-way. I think actually a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty when you get to the school. But, south of it, they have, south of this area, they have an apartment of right-of-way or south.
So, what you're proposing is get another sixty feet all the way through south for any new residential development?
Right, anywhere, which would be, so far it's vacant property.
Sixty feet?
Total a hundred and twenty feet because it's a major arterial streets, so a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way.
But, we don't have a hundred and twenty feet up north, too?
North, north of Garrett, close to the school you do. South of that, you have a bit vary between seventy and ninety feet.
Then my question would be this, is that you've got nothing in north of Garrett, why are you starting to build?
Actually, north of Garrett, which we do have, where the city does have right-of-way anywhere from seventy to a hundred and twenty feet. South of Garrett, there is a hundred and twenty feet along this area here and the remaining portions are the vacant, which normally would be acquired. There's a subdivision that would come in, they were dedicated for the thoroughfare plan. But, the current plan, it's, in fact, it wouldn't be feasible because it would cut right through existing subdivisions which were developed back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. This is the current alignment. As you can see, there's residential subdivisions in that area. Staff proposes to extend it south, which wouldn't interfere with the developed property at this point. The P and Z Commission recommends ending it here at Mayfield Road.
And if we were to build, and once we annexed, annexed that area and we were supposed to build, we would be responsible for the rest of the right-of-way and, and building, what's the, what's the back-to-back requirement for a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way?
I believe it's about sixty-one.
Sixty foot, sixty foot, back-to-back road. That's a, that's a big arterial. And just to stop at Garrett and not do anything, you need to continue at Dilworth. Does Dilworth have the bridge going across the Royal?
No, it doesn't.
I mean, so now we're requiring a large amount of property to nowhere, you know, with my, the Commissioner understands. And then we don't, what's Dil-, the right-of-way, Dan, for south of Expressway and Stewart Place now that we're going to be building?
Existing sixty.
Existing sixty and the back, and the pavement?
We're doing forty, forty-four and fifty-four at the, with the head turn back.
Right. I would, I would say that would be more, because, would you have already gotten one-twenty already from the...
There's one-twenty on this section right here. And I believe there's even one-twenty close to where the school is at, Stewart Place School is at, for that future widening of that, from this, from the expressway.
I mean, that's for a thoroughfare that goes through and goes somewhere, but this is not going anywhere.
Yeah, we acquired the one-hundred-and-twenty right at the intersection of Business and Stewart Place Road.
Which is a Tech Stop project.
Is there anything prompting this?
Yeah.
And the thoroughfare plan, is there something that's required?
I think staff is just trying to deal with the subdivision, where the alignment that where it is right now, and just trying to deal with that. Maybe we can come back to late date and we want to amend the roadway itself to reduce the type of roadway. Thoroughfare plan calls for it to be a major arterial.
But, like I said, major arterial takes you from one place to another. I don't see where it's cooking.
The thoroughfare plan, which is this plan for the future, is, at least what it shows now, is to continue to connect all the way down to Dilworth Road and for a bridge to be conducted for a thoroughfare plan and for it to connect to Jimbooy Road and then eventually go out to Rangerville Road. There has been, requires a future development. We have a future subdivision on the agenda, which...
Well, I don't, we're not going to be doing anything like this anytime soon, right? We don't, we're not actually extending it or widening it. You just, you just want to put the alignment in, in the better location so that as development occurs out there, people know, people know where the roadway is going to be.
I think if the Commission wishes, what we can do is just deal with the alignment tonight and maybe in the future, deal with...
I don't have a problem with the alignment. I think it's just the, the right-of-way. It just puts an impact on the property owner. You lose a lot of, you know, forty-acre tract of land at sixty feet. So, that's quite a bit of acreage. I'd like to revisit, I, I'm pretty much like to revisit our whole thoroughfare plan, Mayor, I think, because a lot of these are coming back to us, you know, for amendments and such. And I don't think it's really thought out, you know, kind of like the growth we had, you know, ten years ago. I think we really need to revisit the whole thoroughfare plan. It's just, just maybe, maybe that's an idea, just come back looking at thoroughfare plans.
Do you want to do that, do you want to do that before we take action on this one?
Yeah, I think so. I think we should. And I thought, I had mentioned that, too, planning a year or two ago, that we need to rethink this thoroughfare plan.
You did?
Is there, is there a time issue on this report?
Well, just for future subdivisions, it's on the agenda and the future ones that are coming in, what they would see, they have to dedicate the mark right-of-way, but it comes to their property.
Well, you have alignment now, not just the old one?
Just a plan for the future.
Can we, can we approve just, not a width requirement, but just...
Yeah, that's what Dan suggested. I mean, we could go, we could have a public hearing. We could read the caption. Somebody could move to adopt the ordinance, but only with the real line, not with the width of the road. And then we could pass that to them, unless you don't want to do that, then you need to table, you need to file, you need to put a motion to table.
I could make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Can you get a Tech Stop to fix? That's his first assignment.
There's a motion, but I think second, all those in favor say aye.
I'd also want to stroke staff to maybe get a meeting, you know, planning zone and come up with a meeting between them and us to go through all the thoroughfare plans.
Okay, item thirteen, consider and take action to grant a variance request to the City of Harlingen Subdivision ordinance, number zero seven dash twenty-eight, Section four point one point two, with regards to length to width ratio in excess of four to one proposed tier subdivision. Apparently, it was stretching five point zero zero acre tract of land of block five, Stewart Place subdivision, survey two ninety-four, Cameron Cut, Texas Lookout, on the west side of Dilworth Road, approximately six hundred and seventy feet north of Dilworth Road, down the Jefferson Plan.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance of the four to one lot length with ratio for a proposed one-lot subdivision for residential use. For the subdivision ordinance, the length of the lot cannot exceed the width by more than four times. In this case, the length exceeds the width of a lot, approximately, total feet of two hundred and ninety feet. The hardship in this particular case is, this area is developed around it, can't acquire additional property to bring it in compliance with the four to one ratio. P and Z recommends approval and as well as staff, take any questions on the item.
Where's this at?
Dilworth Road.
Dilworth?
North of Mayfield.
Hey, can you give us a hundred and twenty feet then? We'll solve that ratio problem if you have something like that. That's right there.
Okay, is there a...
Slide, Dan, slide.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider take action to allocate funding from the hotel motel fund balance for tourism and marketing to be equally matched by the Bronx Economic Development Corporation and direct staff, prepare the necessary agreement. Now, I'd like, let me give a little background on this. Here's actually the last request to the item, that's not, really, the request is not, the, at the last Economic Development Corporation board meeting, there were sort of, there were a couple of proposals on their agenda to consider the purchase of advertising into different publications. One was a, a local or regional publication, another one's a, it was a shopping magazine, something you may be familiar with, that promotes shopping to visitors from Mexico, to lots of retailers in the valley. They were about to take action to award, or spend about thirty-seven thousand dollars on that. And I suggested that perhaps if they really, if we really believed that we needed to do some additional advertising in Mexico to alert the Mexican shopper, the Bass Pro Shops is here in Harlingen, especially in, in anticipation of Sima La Santa, that perhaps funds from the hotel motel tax fund balance could be used instead of using EDC funds. And so, I told the chairman that we could put this on the agenda for the next meeting and, and consider maybe taking some of the hotel, hotel fund balance and based upon the request for thirty-seven dollars, seven thousand dollars to advertise the shopping, my number was sort of fifty thousand dollars. This letter came after that. So, this, what I was trying to do is save Economic Development Corporation dollars for, you know, job creation and use advertising, hotel motel taxes. It can be used for advertising for advertising. With, having said that, as to why this happens on the agenda, we also asked, I think Carlos asked Hope Depot to come, or CTV, to tell us what is, what we are doing right now in Mexico in terms of advertising and advertising Bass Pro Shops. I just to hear her thoughts on this subject. Hope?
Thank you, Mayor and City Commission. I just wanted to make sure after the EDC meeting that you were aware of our current marketing efforts. And I also did present to the EDC Board recently, updating them on what we are doing, as well as to the Commission in my last quarterly report. I've provided for you an overview of our overall two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve fiscal year ad buys. Mexico is one of those markets, but as you can see from the overall view, there are other markets that we focus on as well. So, the first one with the green is the overall marketing and advertising buys for the year. The one that we want to mostly speak about today, because the funds that are being requested would be primarily to focus on Mexico. Most importantly, retail, hotels, Bass Pro Shops. And so, I want to make sure that you're aware, and especially with Sima La Santa coming up, there is an increase in our marketing efforts. But, of course, our, our funds are limited based on the fact that we do have to market to so many different audiences. The, the chart is provided with the yellow is outlining six different magazine publications, including the Shopping, Shopping Map, which is also a part of that same publication and is a bi, bi-annual publication that is circulated throughout the year. Texas Iturismo, which is a part of El Norte newspaper, the largest newspaper in Monterrey with a circulation of over a hundred and forty thousand people. So, it's, it's a huge circulation, a huge impression rate that we're getting to in that market. VIP Magazine, Progressive Magazine, which is more focused on the male business audience. We've been pushing fishing and outdoors and the Bass Pro Shops heavily there, as well as City Magazine. In addition to the magazines and newspapers, we also have billboards on the Alta Vista from Monterrey and we have billboards on the Far Rayosa Bridge and Brownsville Matamoros Bridge. So, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that there is a great deal of marketing and advertising efforts for the Mexican market going on. Certainly, the funds that are being proposed would only help to further our efforts. Where we right now may not be able to do a half a page ad, we may be able to do a one-page ad, a couple of page spread. But, you know, certainly they will help. But, what staff's recommendation is, I just wanted to remind you that all the funds that are used from the hotel occupancy tax must follow the Texas tax code. And I know that the EDC has a little bit of different market than we do from a tourism perspective on their business development side. And obviously, I just want to reinforce the fact that this, these funds would be used for tourism marketing, which the Bass Pro Shops and all of those retail are a part of. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You know, with the Bass Pro opening several months ago, we've all been kind of focused on the sales tax that have been derived from the opening. But we really kind of haven't looked at the increase in the CBB tax. Have we seen an increase in hotel motel tax revenue?
We actually just received the latest report from the state on hotel occupancy tax, and we have not seen a huge increase, it's been, it was about point one percent, but it was an increase. And for the overall year, we're staying, we've stayed about even year over year from last year. So the first quarter of this year has not been released, so I don't have that information, I might be able to give a little bit more.
So the numbers that you were just giving covered what period in time?
That would be between, it would be the last quarter of two thousand and eleven.
That'd be about six weeks.
Right, and Bass Pro Shops opened up mid-November, so it's not a true reflection just yet.
Hopefully, going forward this year, we'll be able to see some improvement as well in that.
I hope so, and I have heard from the hoteliers, just, you know, keeping up with them, that they have seen an increase, and especially from the Mexican market, so that is certainly optimistic, and hopefully we'll continue to see that.
So that's a good justification for our efforts in trying to compile some money so that we can increase our advertising in the Mexican market.
Yes, sir. And another recommendation, and it's outlined in the agenda item, I would just recommend that if we move forward with this, that we specifically outline the use of the funds that would be provided from the EDC, because ad buys are a portion of the cost. But there's a lot of work that goes into the designing of ads, and copyrighting, and all of that, which are considerable.
Do you know, do you know what the difference between what was being proposed by De Shopping for that thirty seven thousand? You know what that was specifically going to be used for?
I don't know the specifics on it, but my, I'm guessing that it was just, it was a multi-month, it wasn't just for one. It would have been over a six, six month period, it would have been probably a full page ad every month, and potentially more, but I don't have that.
What would it be different from what you're already doing at De Shopping?
Like I said, it basically would allow for more. It would, instead of our half page that we're doing now, it would allow for maybe a two page spread that includes a map, includes additional specified businesses being, being mentioned in those ads. It really would just be a larger presence. Some of the other communities in the valley, you will see that they have, you know, two pages side by side, not only focusing on retail, focusing on mentioning all the hotels, you're just able to get your more exposure, basically.
Were we doing any regional collaborations, like with maybe the outlet mall, trying to synergize our funds advertising?
We are not in the moment, we have tried to reach out to include them in our advertising. Via Vista is a part of signs and properties, and they're working with us to provide logos and things like that, so that we can promote them. We have not gotten the same response from the outlets. We mentioned that, we mentioned them over and over, but we don't have the same direct support right now.
The information we get for the, I can say hotel motel, how old is it?
Well, it always runs about three months behind, or, yeah, I guess about three months behind, because the state comptroller has to, it takes time for them to compile their reports. So right now, I have the third, I have the fourth quarter of two thousand and eleven, I don't have the first quarter of two thousand and eleven.
We want to bring up, because we talked about this before, about maybe even coming up with a form for ourselves, so that way you might be able to come on through monthly instead of wait three months?
Sure, happy to do that. And now I provide reports weekly to the city manager, but I don't, I'm happy to do that.
The numbers from the state, their report were?
Those are quarterly, so I, as far as those numbers, they would not be able to be reported on every month, right?
I think the key is getting those extra shoppers here to stay here, and stay in our hotels. Right now, they're probably just coming, visiting Bass Pro Shop, and then taking back off them. We need to grab them, get them interested in something else, like White Wings, everything, so, you know.
I could agree more, and we are looking at a variety of new campaigns to do more, to entice them, and partner with organizations that offer discounts, and for different promotions like that, so.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Venio brings up, is the fact that you can offer White Wings games, and if you stay in Harlingen, you know you can shop at Bass Pro.
Doug and I are already in talks, got that going on.
Do you have museums and everything?
What do we need to do?
Civil War monuments, you know.
Do you want to?
Well, what do we, what do we want to do about it?
I make a motion to take action to approve.
Well, the mayor did probably a hundred dollars.
I do promise a hundred dollars, but I would.
I think it's on film.
But I would suggest that we, that we just agree to fund what was presented, that thirty seven thousand dollars. And then if they have something more specific, bring it back, and we'll consider that. Let's pay for the, let's pay for what they wanted to do out of the fund balance, and then, and then if they, we have, somebody else wants to come back with a specific dollar amount for something, let's consider that separately.
Well, obviously, the budget has been looked at, and, because this, because this is a, does this require a budget?
On their part?
No, on the C B budget.
It's not, because it's coming from fund balance.
You do have, if you're going to take out of the fund balance, you do have to approve by the council, they'll come back with the adjustment.
Okay, so they'll come back with a?
Yes, they'll have to have a budget, approve from the council first.
But I think time is a essence because of Semana Santa.
Make a motion similar to what Mayor Boswell proposed, and that is that we match the thirty seven thousand dollars to accommodate what is presented in terms of the advertising that was proposed.
Second. Well, the whole thing is thirty seven, so they wouldn't have to put that in.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to save their dollars for economic development.
Okay, so you want us to pay, you want the EDC to fund, right, okay, that's my motion.
Okay, second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider to take action to allow the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to access the parking lot located in Harrison, First Street and Stone, repair monitoring wells.
Good evening. TCQ is requesting access to the city parking lot located in Harrison, the First Street, to install the repair monitoring wells. The wells located on the property will allow the environmental consultant from TCQ, GeoStrato, to continue their assessment of the groundwater contaminant pool located underneath the property. TCQ would like to access, would like an access agreement between the city and the state of Texas to allow consultant to perform the activities. Installation of one boring and pre-monitor wells to be located on the former guaranteed back property. Pre-form repairs on several existing monitoring wells. Staff recommends allowing TCQ access to the property to install and repair the wells located on the property.
I'll make a motion that we take action to allow the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality access to the parking lot.
Second.
So you're going to tear up the parking lot?
Are they going to repair it?
Repair it and locate a new one.
They just act it to hold the cap?
Yes, yeah, they'll be cut.
Okay.
Got it, motion second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item sixteen. Consider to take action to set up a bid and award contract for the overlay of following streets. Dixon Avenue, and Expressway Frontiers South, and Lincoln Avenue, and Lincoln Avenue from the Expressway Frontiers West, Dixon Avenue. Recycling Center Parking Lot, number twenty twelve.
Each year, the city Harlingen selects an overlay street that needs a repair. Repairs are typically made in the form of one and a half inch layer of asphalt on top of the existing roadway to address surface failures and extend the life of the street. For fiscal year twenty eleven and twelve, staff was able to utilize available funding to solicit bids to overlay, improve the following sections of streets and parking lot. Dixieland Road from Expressway Frontiers South to Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Avenue from Expressway Frontiers to Dixieland, and the recycling center parking lot. The proposed list of street overlay projects totals approximately point seventy-three miles. The amount represents less than one percent of total city streets. The city overlay projects will also include necessary base repairs. On February the second, twenty twelve, staff received and opened a total of six sealed bids for the overlay projects. All the bids submitted met bid requirements. Staff met with the low bidder after the bid opening day to discuss the bid and ability to complete the work for the amount submitted. The contractor assured staff that the project had been completed with the bid amount submitted, and was comfortable moving forward with the project. Staff recommends that we accept the low bid submitted by F J W Construction in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, is there?
I'll make a motion that we accept it. Staff recognition, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, overlay Dixon Avenue and Lincoln. Okay, item seventeen. Consider to discuss and take action with the parking lot in First Reading. Create and establish juvenile case manager fee and fine, and penalty, and fines on misdemeanors, to pay a juvenile case manager fee and not receive five dollars. Establish those juvenile case managers, and the fees used in favor of such costs, opposition.
My name is Roxanne Vice-Cortorneal, I'm your Harlingen city attorney. And as you know, the city of Harlingen created its youth community court relatively recently, about a year and a half ago. And in the process of creating that court, we've added no new staff to the youth community court, with the exception of the existing staff, that are doing everything possible to make it run. As you know, the youth that come through our youth community court are not charged a fine if they're in there for a non-trafficking offense. Actually, rather, instead, they're court ordered to do community service, and/or a court ordered to get social service treatment plans. One of the goals of this commission in discussing the youth community court has been to find out how to provide more youth services treatments. And one of the things that we can do is certainly hire an individual who will work as a juvenile case manager. And you might be wondering, well, what is a juvenile case manager, and how can the city afford to create that job? Well, let me tell you a little bit about what a juvenile case manager is. It is certainly somebody who would be in the courtroom, and he would provide pre-sentence assessment of the youth, of the individual. They would determine what has happened to this kid, what kind of environment is he from, how's he doing in school, what kind of developmental or psychological issues there might be. And that social worker, if you will, the juvenile case manager, would provide a recommendation to the prosecutor and to the judge on what the sentence should be for that youth involved in the case that they're there for that day. A juvenile case manager could also work with our parks department and other service providers throughout the city to establish community service projects where the youth gather, create something great for our city, and move forward. So the juvenile case manager could serve as a community service coordinator. Our juvenile case manager could also write grants and find them, if you write them, to provide and partner with additional youth services. If you kind of take a general look at it, a juvenile case manager is sort of like a court clerk, because they do have to be involved with the court paperwork. They're also sort of like part a social worker, because they've got to be tracking these kids, and making sure that they're in compliance with their court orders, and making sure that they're getting the services that they need. They're sort of a probation officer, because they're going to have to tell the prosecutor and the judge if the youth is not complying with that court order. And they're also going to be out there in the community assisting with those community service projects, and coordinating what's needed for those youth. So how can we create this juvenile case manager position? Well, under state law, the state law allows us to create what is specifically called a juvenile case manager fee and fund. It allows a city to charge each person who's been fined with a class C misdemeanor, a juvenile case manager fee. And that fee can be up to five dollars per case. And the fee, when collected, has to actually be deposited into a juvenile case manager fund. The judge, however, may waive that five dollar fee, or up to five dollar fee, if it's a financial hardship case on a person. What I want to make clear is, this fee is applicable to any person who goes to court to pay off a municipal court ticket, whether it be a traffic ticket or a non-traffic ticket. The five, up to the five dollar fee is not only for youth offenses, it's for all offenses committed in the city of Harlingen. Again, this is an option for the commission to consider. The Texas legislature, why am I bringing this to you now, and didn't bring it to you when we first created the youth community court? Well, the Texas legislature recently amended state law. It used to be that we could only charge up to a five dollar fee for a juvenile case manager if the juvenile case manager only primarily was involved with failure to attend cases. Failure to attend class cases. But the Texas legislature recently amended that, and saw the five dollar fee can actually be used to have the juvenile case manager service the youth who commit any class C misdemeanor offenses. The case managers are also now, under the state law amendments, are required to seek minimum training and educational standards, and they're also required to have a code of ethics in order to work with the youth. So this fee of up to five dollars can actually be used, according to state law, to pay for the salary, the benefits, the training, the travel expenses, office supplies, and any other necessary expenses related to funding that juvenile case manager. And it can only be used for the juvenile case manager, they cannot be used for anything else. Here's an approximate annual budget for a juvenile case manager. I worked with the human resources department, and they gave me a classification for the employee regarding the job responsibilities they would have. So that's an estimated thirty-five thousand dollar annual salary with benefits, with a approximate budget for training, travel reimbursement. Equipment and software is a larger cost, because it would be a started cost, office supplies. So we're estimating that it would be an annual budget of a little more than fifty thousand dollars. According to state records that our Harlingen municipal court submits to the state, on average, we dispose of about eighteen thousand cases. Now remember, the fee can be up to five dollars. So if we only charge two dollars per case, we would be at thirty-six thousand. If you keep on going up, and we charge up to five dollars per case, we would only bring in about ninety thousand. So in order to meet the annual budget approximate cost, we would have to at least charge the each case that came through and was disposed of at least three dollars. There are other municipal court fees that the city of Harlingen currently has in place that are authorized under state law that will work very similar to this juvenile case manager fee. It is a security fee of three dollars per case, and a technology fee of four dollars per case. And each of those have their own independent fund that the municipal court accesses and spends for those necessary needs involving security and technology from the municipal court. This is an option, a juvenile case manager can be hired, using a juvenile case manager fee and fund of up to five dollars. It is someone that can be dedicated to providing youth services, both from a probationary review, a social service review, grant writing review, community service coordination. It's up to this commission, I thought that you'd like to know that the option existed. And I appreciate commissioners looking and forcing the thought of way to make this happen.
How is it working now, what do we do now in a case for child?
The city attorney's staff has a prosecutor, and the prosecutor and the city attorney's legal assistant sit there and act as this, they act as the quick juvenile case manager that makes a quick assessment, and makes the recommendations to the service providers.
How much time does that take away from their regular duties?
Each prosecutor, and the prosecutor and the legal assistant spend approximately eight hours per week, per work week, handling that job.
Yeah, but they don't do anything to the community or problem or anything like that, do they?
We receive phone calls from the youth consistently in my office, regarding whether, what they're supposed to do, how they're supposed to do it, where they're supposed to go, so my legal assistant.
But it takes you away from, takes your group away from other duties?
It does, now, the good thing about this is that the juvenile case manager, while we initially serviced that in my office, it was a good startup. It's time to, to create the position, and to let the legal assistant and the city attorney focus on other projects to bring to the city.
Be allowed, is you're on your department if you have to?
Our department will focus on whatever the city commission deems is necessary to improve the quality of life for the city.
But for efficiency purposes, we better handle it, so that way your department isn't going out there taking care of all this other group.
There are other things that we can do to help improve the city. I think we've started this up, and a juvenile case manager who's a professional. I think we've started this up and a juvenile case manager who's a professional, certified with a social worker license by the State of Texas, can bring another added dimension level that will improve the youth community court.
Okay, so your recommendation is a three dollar, a three dollar fee?
The minimum that would be needed would be three dollars per case to be able to support the juvenile case manager position.
How many do you think that the judge will kick out, I mean, as far as three dollar cases? Is there an estimate?
I have not, I'm not privy to the judge actually kicking out fees, but...
Does he kick off the technology fee or the...
No, not that I'm aware of.
Do we apply that today, the technology fee now?
Yeah, he just showed us this two dollar fee.
Hold on. Is that...
Okay, what do you... I have a couple of questions. In terms of implementing or starting, what do you see starting this case manager? I mean, when? And if you're gonna, if you're gonna save some budget, is that some budget that we can allocate to this to get it started mid-year in this initial budget? Or when do we think we can start this?
Well, we have to create the, we have to pass the ordinance that would create the fund and the fee. And then, of course, we have to make an amendment to the budget to create the position.
Do we have some startup funds somewhere that we could get something going sooner than later while the fee accumulates enough to be self-sustaining?
That's a fantastic question. I wanted to bring the option to the commission and allow the commission to give me direction on whether or not they want me to proceed with spending time on this. If you want me to do that, we can certainly come back with the city manager and provide even more detailed information on the length of time it's going to actually take to implement this. But I, once the ordinance is passed and the budget's amended and the positions are advertised or the position is advertised, because again, this is for a full-time position, although if you wanted to do one and a half positions or, or part-time positions...
Well, I've got some more questions as soon as we get there. But the next question is, you indicated that your office spends about eight hours a week on this, and if we introduce a full-time case manager, are there other things that that person can be doing to be productive if we hire a full-time? And the second part of that question is, if we need to start off slower, can we hire a part-time case manager?
Yes, we could hire a part-time to slow, to be slower and to get into the groove. It's a very good observation that you make, about eight hours per week spent by my office. However, you have to understand that's an eight hours to get the project in place and to keep it in place. There's an enhancement of a juvenile case manager being able to coordinate things that we currently do not do, and that is creating community service projects.
Well, that's my question. What, what other job duties can this individual do?
Finding grants, writing...
That will add value to this whole process.
Sure. Let's get back to the job description. It would be finding grants, writing grants, partnering with other service providers throughout the valley who may be able to assist us with these people, enhancing and creating interlocal agreements with other service providers. For example, we've seen an escalating, in the past two months, we've seen an escalating amount of young women, young women youth, who are coming to our courts pregnant. And I'm thinking, where am I going to find, I need to find a provider of young mothers to assist them in their motherly skills and the management of their pregnancy. And I don't, haven't been able to do that because I haven't pushed time aside to try to find that provider. This would be something that a juvenile case manager would be able to do for us.
So from a financial perspective, if we needed to phase in until the revenue sustains the position, that'd be one thing. But in terms of adding value to the process of serving the juvenile court as a case manager, there's more than ample amount of work to keep that person busy. That's, that was the concern, and it sounds like there is.
Provided, I mean, you can be looking at other services from each other, institutions and everything, plus you have eighteen thousand cases a year. I'm sure you're plenty enough, plenty enough work for a case manager.
Well, the eighteen thousand cases a year is not the juvenile court, that's the overall work.
Oh, but the five, the four dollars, you said, three dollars comes from all cases, right?
That's correct, it comes from all cases.
Okay, this is the, the action, the action I was trying to simply to sign what we want to establish the fund, create, create the fee and establish the fund. So I'm, I'm hearing that that's, what I'm hearing is that the commission is interested in doing that. So why don't we just, you want to read the order in the caption?
In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, adding section thirty-three point one zero of chapter thirty-three of the Harlingen City Code as amended, establishing a juvenile case manager fee and fund, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing for publication, establishing an effective date, and ordering other matters pertaining to the foregoing. As, the only thing that's important for the commission, if they choose to adopt and pass this ordinance on first reading, is to provide direction to the city attorney on the amount the fee should be allocated.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion that we take action to adopt the ordinance on first reading, establishing a three dollar fee. I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like signing. Motion, period, sign of eighteen. Consider discussing taking action to adopt resolution to establish and create a city charter review advisory committee to state certain issues to be determined by the city commission and make for the area final recommendations to the city commission for possible charter election November sixth, two thousand twelve.
Two city commissioners have placed this item on the agenda, and I am prepared to answer legal questions for the creation of a charter review advisory committee on a city charter amendment election to be held in November, should the commission choose. I can provide you with the briefing of the law and then sit down and allow you to ask you any questions and whether or not you even choose to do this. How would you like for me to proceed?
Well, one of the things is that if we don't try to do anything before the charter amendment now, we'd have to wait another two years, isn't that right?
We could go in May.
Okay, why don't I go ahead and give you a quick presentation and then give you, let you allow? Is that fine? The Texas Constitution requires that new cities charter shall be altered, amended, or repealed more often than two years. It actually says oftener in the Texas Constitution. Two years does equal three hundred and sixty-five days, except the leap year is three sixty-six. So I just want you to know that it has been longer than two years, and so the City of Harlingen is eligible to be able to alter, amend, or repeal any portions of its city charter. Harlingen voters must approve each charter amendment by majority of vote, and there has to be one subject per amendment. This is a diagram that helps inform you on what the legal process is for ending the charter. The city commission can make its own motion for a proposed charter amendment. And if it makes that own motion, then they have to have and pass an ordinance that orders a charter amendment election. Once that ordinance is passed, we have to wait thirty days for the election, and we have to publish notice in a valuing star for fourteen days before the election to let voters know that this is going to happen. At the election, a majority vote, like I said, of the voters would have to actually approve the amendment. If the amendment is passed, then by the majority voters, and the city commission comes back into session and enters the order into the record declaring the amendment's adopted. This is actually the date where the amendment becomes effective. So the amendment to the charter is not effective at the election date, it's actually effective at the date the commission enters the order. Once the commission enters the order, we send the new charter to the Secretary of State and the city secretary records the new charter. The city commission, again, can make its own motion for a proposed charter amendment, which means you can do it on your own by majority vote. In the past, though, the city commission has had charter review advisory committees. And that's exactly what they are, they're an advisory committee that meets and reviews the charter and then makes recommendations to the commission. The commission can either accept, reject, or alter the advisory committee's report to them. Of course, the voters of the city reign, and so actually a petition signed by five percent of the qualified voters or twenty thousand of the voters, whichever is less, can actually submit a petition and require by mandate that there be an ordinance ordering a charter amendment election for whatever amendment it was that they got the petition signed for. I want to talk a little bit about the election. The next eligible election date for a charter amendment would be November sixth, two thousand twelve. Here's a proposed project timeline, should the city commission choose to do this. They could pass a resolution establishing a charter review advisory committee today and making their appointments. The advisory committee would have to, I would recommend, make a preliminary recommendation to the city commission at the May sixteenth regular meeting. And then the advisory committee would make final recommendations to the city commission at the city commission's June sixth regular meeting. At the August first meeting, we would call and order the charter amendment election on October fourteenth and twenty-first, we would comply with state law regarding those publications with the election day on the sixth. Sometime between the fifteenth and the twenty-first, we would order the approved charter amendments adopted, and then we'd send off to the Secretary of State. So if the city commission chooses to establish a charter review advisory committee, the resolution has been prepared for you with the things that are certainly within your discretion to change. How many members would you want on that charter review advisory committee? What would you want the member qualifications to be? And what topics to address, such as specific topics within the charter, like changing the May to November elections, or if you want the entire charter to be reviewed by the advisory committee? This is some general direction for the city commission. This was not my item on the agenda. My goal was to provide you with some legal parameters in this, in your discussion.
Well, I just want to start off, since Commissioner Prepschall put this on the agenda. Obviously, we have a, one need that we need to address, and that is the May to November municipal elections, which is something that's kind of been handed down to us from the federal government. And that's why we're having a November election this year. And I think that it's, it's only prudent that we put it on the agenda so that the voters can determine if they would like to see the charter permanently changed to a November election for the City of Harlingen. Also, it has been several years since we have looked at the charter. And one of the regular things that most cities do is they go in and they look at the language to make sure that it's, that it's current and that we comply with new state laws and whatnot so that we can modify the charter and be consistent with that. So there's some charter maintenance that we need to look at, and we, we need to ask the committee to look at anything that needs to be updated to make sure we're in compliance with state law or federal law for that matter. And so there are some things that we need to do, and that's basically the reason why we're putting this on the agenda, because we do need to get a committee going so that we can look at it. We did have some lingering language with the single-member district adoption or modification to the charter that need some corrections, so we, that's another area that we need to, we need to make adjustments.
I agree. Me and Syl, we discussed one before, this was a time call last night. Charter's been a long time since charter was even looked at. And I think what we need to do is retake a good candidate.
I think even though the charter was changed for single-member, single-member districts several years ago, then an actual charter review advisory committee has not been established in the city for five or six years. So we've gone, we've gone that far without somebody actually looking at the language and the details of the charter to make sure that, that we're up to date and we're in the 21st century with our charter. And having said that, I'd like to make a motion to...
I have a question. Are we looking at tonight making some of these decisions as far as identifying how many members and...
Well, there's a proposed resolution that has got that.
There's a proposed resolution with blanks for those questions.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because this would be a, given the, it'd be a very important step for us to take in the city. I think, I certainly understand the logic behind some of the recommendations. But we just had an election with a new commissioner that will be, will be canvassing the votes this Monday. I think out of courtesy to that new commissioner, I'd like to table this to give him an opportunity to be a part of this decision making.
Well, Mr. Prepschall's here, and he'd like to weigh in on it. I don't have a problem waiting till Monday, we could put it on the same agenda. Or if you don't have a problem with it, we could take care of it today.
We're not, you're not gonna lose any, I mean, certainly you, certainly you'd like to be recognized to speak if you're more than time to... I think Commissioner Castillo's point is well taken, and I think it's, and I think that, you know, to, to allow him to participate, not as a commissioner-elect, but as a commissioner, I think would be important. But I, we're not gonna lose any time anyway because we don't have the, I'm looking at, we don't have a place to appoint the members tonight anyway, so we have to put, we have to put that off the agenda.
Well, there's a, that would be an executive board member, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but there's not, there's no charter advisory committee board on this list, I see.
The mayor's correct.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to do that tonight also, to listen to the arguments for charter...
Yeah, and I'll make the motion that we table and that we post it for Monday's special meeting and add that to the agenda.
I'll second.
Some motion, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item's tabled.
It's a good thing you're sitting down, Mike, because we don't have all night.
Okay, item...
And Roxanne, we could add that in here provisional or something, because I'm, I'm ready to make the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, what's your idea of the number? Did you have a number in mind?
Well, at least everybody be represented by one person.
Discuss, item nineteen, discuss and reconsider the approval of resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty-one, establishing rental rates for the water splash park and its associated gazebo's at Lotsy Hill Park located at six oh five North L Street. I'll place this on the agenda as a person, Commissioner Castillo, I think you want to...
Well, Richard Castillo and I talked about this before. I'm looking at it, item A on it actually is, is misquoted. I had talked to staff before about pricing as far as gazebo's and that. You know, we talked about pricing exclusivity, the entire park was to the school districts. We should have actually been in item A. And item B, Commissioner Castillo and I talked about it, and I actually would like to tow from thirty-five down to twenty-five. But one of the reasons is that you have to rent out gazebo's because otherwise you're gonna have mass confusion. And what, what happened is that you'll have people sleeping overnight just to make sure they get one of the gazebo's in the morning, okay? Or somebody's gonna turn around and say, well, I had this first, and they're gonna start a little argument out there. So that's one of the reasons for renting gazebo's. Now, I also would like to do this, take the two hundred dollars for the school districts and decrease that to a hundred dollars for exclusivity for the entire park. And the reason why I said this, when we talk about exclusivity, there is no fence around the park, you know what I'm saying? So you can't like, you know, lock it up. You're gonna get kids from lots of streets going in there, but at least the school districts can have all three gazebo's. Till we get a fence up there, then, then it'll be actually exclusive to someone.
Dick, my only, my only, and we discussed this thing, and I, I don't, I don't have an issue with the intent behind that exclusive use of it. I think logistically, the biggest issue we have right now is the lack of the fencing.
Right.
And if we're gonna be charging somebody for exclusive use without some way of having it fenced in and have controlled access, my concern is the hardship we'll place on staff because staff will be the ones that have to go in there and try to enforce that. And one thing we can consider is, you know, just holding off on the fees. I think all of that is a good, a good idea, and I think there's definitely a good reasoning behind that. But given the fact, until we get the fencing up, that's, that's my only thing there, because I think the idea's good, but without the fencing and the controlled access, then... I think the idea's good, but without the fencing and the controlled access, then whoever does pay for that exclusive use may not truly enjoy that because it's open to everybody.
All we can do is this, is, uh, keep the fees at twenty-five dollars for each gazebo, and just explain to the school, because they're gonna be the ones that'll want, you know, the entire park, which is some of the phone calls that you got and I got. You know, we charge them the same thing, we charge them twenty-five dollars for a gazebo. I mean, I'm, I think that's... And then what you do is, is you're gonna have to mark some, somehow you're gonna have to mark these gazebo's as to who rented it, um, what time, what date, and, uh, you know, there's, there's ways you can do that. Uh, plastic folders, little hooks, slap gun stuff, gazebo itself.
Commissioner, one of the things that we do with the school district is we have, um, interlocal agreements that allow them to use our facilities at no charge. We normally give them a certain number of rentals, like for the auditorium in the Casa de Amistad. After they exceed a certain number, then we start to charge. Perhaps I think it might be beneficial to do that here, that we give them so many uses of the park, get no charge, and then perhaps charge them after somebody...
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. You just need to raise the, the, the fees down to a reasonable rate, because we just can't do the exclusivity now.
That, that was my biggest concern, and I think we were, in our discussions here, we're addressing that, 'cause, uh, you know, that initial, if, if we were to do that, I think it'd be putting the use of the gazebo's outside the region of some of our residents, and I think it's a great thing, it's a good thing for our community. And I think, um, some of the ideas you've discussed, I think that's a good way to address that. My only lingering issue or concern would be about the lack of controlled access and how staff or, you know, any, any from staff would have to try to enforce that. So I guess the understanding would have to be with people that do that, that we, we can't guarantee that.
Well, you know, one of the things that we also discussed was the fact that the way the uses of the park is right now, um, three hours is probably on the moat, because then the system starts clawing up. The grass hasn't taken, so you're getting a lot of kids running off into the grass and bringing mud in, right? So that's a, backwash the, uh, tank and clean out the filters. Now, that being said, if you bring somebody in in the last hour of the three hours, right? And you set the schedule, last hour to three hours, and then after the three hours, everything is shut down for an hour, that guy will be there for two hours. You can do that, you can do it that way, so you don't have somebody from park staff out there all the time. Plus, we need crosswalks, um, Dan? We need, you know, are you doing the, uh, doing the, uh, the film, right, for the crosswalks right now? Out there on the streets, using the film on the streets? You got it?
The crosswalks?
Yeah, crosswalks or anything you're doing on town.
Oh, that's already been done.
Okay, well, what we need is from that corner to the other corner where the benches and the trees are, where that little playground is, we need to come with a crosswalk across the street. We need signs out there saying, "Slow children," or, "Careful," whatever. We also need to sign out there, um, depicting hours of operation specifically. You need to sign out there, "No skateboarders, no bicycles, and no rollerblades on the skatepark." We've already had that, and they damaged the whole thing out there. So we need all that in, in, in place. But what I would recommend is, and I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and, uh, give staff direction, that's what we've talked, what we've talked about right now, and come back maybe Monday with a brand new resolution.
We're having skateboarders, and they're gonna have, have to put a fence around it.
Right, and I agree with you.
We're gonna have to put it there.
We're getting close to that.
But they're gonna tear, they're gonna tear it up.
We're looking at...
That's the biggest issue we're looking at right now, is being able to secure that, especially after...
We need to protect that investment, on a perp, it's basically costing a bunch.
No, so we're looking at getting caught for that.
We were looking at wrought iron fence there, to make it look more attractive.
Oh, I like that. I like that. You know, I like that. I don't know if that's gonna cost, but you know, I like that better.
Everybody just on the front...
No, we're gonna have, we got them, if, we're, they're gonna tear that thing out.
Yeah, we already had a complaint.
We already had, had some incidents in there.
Okay.
Having said that, I just wanna give clarification, uh, from the commission, uh, on A, we're looking that they would be rented only for Harlingen Independent School District.
Oh, you can rent any school district.
Any school district.
Right. You know, we need to lower the, the cost for...
From two hundred to one hundred.
Yeah, just rent the gazebo's out for, everybody's gonna get twenty-five bucks a gazebo, even the school district. We just, we can't do that exclusivity thing. So let's give, oh, well, I'm sorry, Gabe came up with the idea, right, that they get it free for somebody who uses it, and then they charge, and then you go to twenty-five dollars a gazebo until you get it offensive.
Okay, you all think you had...
Do you, and then we go to B, are we, are we still looking at renting it to individual persons?
Yes, twenty-five bucks gazebo.
And then you wanna go forty for, for non-residents?
Yes.
So you lower it by ten?
And you don't have any kind of agreement with other school districts, right, Gabe, for that?
No, no. The only agreement we have is with the Harlingen School District.
All right, other school districts that wanna rent it is twenty-five dollars gazebo. So you have to put that in the resolution too. Other school districts should be sized, Harlingen.
And the gazebo will only be exclusive to school districts as well?
Everybody. Everybody, whoever, you know, whoever wants it first, you know, it's first come, first served. If a school district's gonna rent it, Carlos, you're gonna rent all three, you're gonna bring four buses out there, you're gonna have a hundred fifty kids. I'm sorry?
We address on, on A, the fee for non-residents?
Forty.
Forty?
Uh, no, it was a hu, a two hundred for non-residents in the school. You wanna lower it to two hundred for non-residents? Non-res, not, uh...
Land, land, land school district. Land school district. Yeah.
Land Harlingen. And non-res, uh, residents will get twenty-five dollars gazebo, non-residents, uh, forty.
Forty.
Okay, so does, does staff have enough correction on this now?
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll come back then.
Do you understand the direction?
You know what, Gabe, I'll show the city off tomorrow.
The only, the only, the only other thing that we have in the...
You guys should monitor us.
How many... How many free, uh, uh, opportunities you want to...
Well, that's up to Gabe. I mean, I don't know how many you're getting free, uh...
I'll look at the agreement with the auditorium and see how many we can get.
Bring it back in for me.
Yes, since they have all that.
Okay, then let's, uh, we're done with that, let's go on to the fourth, we're gonna have twenty or more.
No.
Mayor, I have one for the senior assistant advisor, uh, Robert, uh, Samron.
Okay, any other board members? Is there a motion to approve board?
Motion to approve board?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to, we got item twenty-two, to take action, consider, take action, approve or buy, for Northwood, right, in the city, Hampton County, Vernon County, precipitation, and the city's tax enforcement zones, number one, two, and three.
Mayor and commission staff is requesting a floor of this, uh, unanimous, discussing executive session.
Let's not make a motion that we, uh, approve the...
And, and, as discussed, as it related to project...
Yes, take a, take action to approve the...
I'm sorry, please, don't, we have to make sure that Commissioner Shapiro is out. Thank you. He chose to do so, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'll restate my motion, take action to approve, revise and look at the agreement that's discussed, uh, between the city and Hampton County regarding the county participation in the city's tax enforcement, finding the three investment zones, one, two, and three.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Okay, now we're gonna go, uh, to executive, so final executive session, item opposed, executive session, discuss following items, A, for seven, chapter five, point one, except chapter D, B T C A, government code, section five, point one, except point one, justice attorney, seek legal advice, and write at least three... Why, it's based on...
Roxanne? Roxanne?
Attorney, public corporation, C, attorney, public corporation, Harlingen, pending request for motion to tax... Three, and, 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 which is, which is conducting a, 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 negotiations regarding the project blue, so motion to go to executive session.
Settle it. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now in executive session, if we can ask, uh, those not involved in the executive session to clear the room, we appreciate your cooperation.
See you later now.